We'll go ahead and call the City of North St. Paul City Council meeting in order for June 7th. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Jenny, if you can take the role.
The mics are working now. Yeah, they are.
And loud.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Mayor Furlong.
Here. Coram is present. Motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? Yep?
I would request that we move City Business Action Items and Recommendations D and E up ahead of Item A out of respect for time for Mr. Casey who's here to deal with that.
Say again, B?
D and E under the City Business Action Items and Recommendations. Just move those up ahead of Item A.
Okay. Anybody have a concern with that? Okay, we'll move D and E up to A and B. Okay. So we'll do that. Motion to adopt the agenda with that correction.
So moved.
Moved by Council. Already, we already did that.
Just kidding.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have the no presentations and consent agenda. I'll turn over to City Manager Stark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. The consent agenda contains several separate items which are considered by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent agenda has been approved, all of the recommended items have been approved as well. Any City Councilmember can request that an item be pulled and for further discussion and individual vote. Tonight, we have a number of items on consent agenda. Item A, the May 3rd, 2022 workshop minutes. Item B, the May 3rd, 2022 HRA closed meeting minutes. Item C, the May 17th, 2022 workshop minutes. Item D, the May 17th, 2022 regular council meeting minutes. Item E, the May 17th, HRA closed meeting minutes, and that concludes the minutes part of it. Item F, general claims of the city. Item G, HRA claims. Item H, EDA claims. Item I, liquor license renewal for city 3.2 on sale liquor license. Item J, liquor license renewals for city off sale intoxicating liquor licenses. Item K, liquor license renewals for on sale intoxicating liquor license, including Sunday sales, on sale intoxicating liquor license with or without patio or outdoor seating areas. Item L, approval of new on sale and Sunday liquor license for Mung House Restaurant and Banquet LLC. Item N, M, sorry, M as in Mary, Rotary Park Wayfinding signage, cement slab location. Item N, revised fund balance policy to increase general fund minimum fund balance. And item O, the MinDOT 2023 to 2027 master partnership agreement. And that concludes tonight's consent agenda.
So at this time, if any Councilmember would like to take off one of the items, they can do so at this time. Not motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. This time, the meeting is open to the public, and I have one here, and that is John Schmal.
I just want to bring up that getting onto the website and reading it and finding out what new things are available. It's just a surprise that, in my case, in one instance, that I didn't want to find my, the situation that put my name getting out in violation of state statute, which kind of made me unhappy. But another item showed up about the new notification tool that's available. And I read the site's explanation, and there's an item that just said, "This can't be." And it says that the city encourages us all residents to set up an account online at the site and select their preferred notifications, including their community placing area, selecting their garbage delivery day. I've lived here for 47 years. I had garbage pickup. And if I have been missing out on garbage delivery, I would like to have it all delivered, whatever I missed. And I didn't think we had a choice of garbage delivery, and I don't think we have a choice of a day. It's scheduled a regular day. Now, I would like my day changed to Thursday because I go up north on Friday, and I'd like to have my container empty on there. But I don't think I have a choice of a garbage delivery day.
I don't think.
But maybe I do.
I don't think you do.
But this says that I do. So maybe you want to get that corrected. Thank you.
And we'll talk to Carrie when she gets back from her vacation. This time, there's nobody else. Oh, he's on Zoom.
Yep.
Got it. Go ahead, RT. RT, welcome.
Thank you very much. How are you guys tonight?
Good. You can hear us?
I can. Thank you.
Okay.
So I really appreciate it. I listened to the workshop. I want to thank you guys for continuing to meet and discuss the community center. A couple of other items that weren't on there today that I'd like to make sure that everybody understands is that first and foremost, since we have been tenants in the community center, the city has brought in about $900,000. Minus the expenses, it's about $600,000, and Dan can certainly correct me if I'm wrong in any of this. But these are all, this is all information from the public documents that are currently available. There's a current balance in the community center's account of about $160,000, and that was as of 2021. So there is money to do some of these minor fixes that are coming up here, just the minor ones, of course. Nobody's saying that you can replace a roof for $160,000, but there is some money there. And we are the tenants actually that are bringing that money in. When you look at our lease, our lease has an excess for the city of about $70,000 per year. Had we been the tenant since the beginning of this community center opening, the community center would be operating and would have had enough money to continue operations. So I just kind of want to point that out, that with our current lease, which of course we would like to extend in some capacity in its current form. As you know, our building is going to be done here in probably April-ish. And one thing that I've been very appreciative of is the council and the mayor in particular saying that we want to work with you. We want to make sure that there's a smooth transition for everyone. So we would like a lease extension into April and possibly May. We'll, of course, pay it in full regardless of when our new building has occupancy. And then we're also, as the city manager said, we're interested in continuing. If we could certainly rent that gym space, if it's available, we would certainly do that and have a second location. So we're still working to work with the city here. If you guys were open to selling, we'd, of course, go down that road again. But if you're not, that's okay. We are still here. We'd like our current lease extended through March, sorry, through April, May. And then we can work on a future plan. If the library takes some more space or you remodel a little bit, but still have the gym space and want to rent it out and make some money that way, that'd be great. I think it'd be mutually beneficial for everyone. But I did want to kind of point out the numbers, that under our current lease, I mean, it's $70,000 in profit a year. So I'd like to kind of continue that as long as we can, and then once the council makes a decision and moves forward, that's great. But we'd certainly like to stay. I just want to, I want to reiterate that once again. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thanks for hearing me via Zoom today as I wasn't able to get in. But enjoy the rest of your meeting, and I will chat with you guys soon.
Thank you, RT, and that's good information for us, I know.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Anybody else on Zoom?
No.
Okay. There is no public hearing. I'll turn it over to City Manager Stark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I believe item number D has become item number A, and that is my resignation. So as you know, I spoke with all five of you on Friday before I formally submitted something. And I did submit a letter of resignation to you on Friday. I don't want to kind of go through and reiterate the whole thing. I would just make a couple of points. One is, it's really quality of life issue for me. You know, my quality of life is not what I would like it to be right now. And this is, this is the remedy that I was able to come up with is resigning my position. I do want to thank you for, for your support of me in the beginning, you know, in the hiring process, but your support throughout this process. It has been, especially the last couple of months, has been a couple, hard couple of months. And your support for me, all five of you, has been just tremendous and unwavering. So I wanted to thank you for that. And I wanted to let you know that, you know, I'm going to do everything I can as a, as an outgoing employee and as an ex-employee to help North St. Paul. So whatever I can do in the next couple of weeks, I'm willing to do whatever I can do once I'm no longer an employee of the City of North St. Paul, I would be happy to do. I had mentioned to you a couple of things in my resignation letter that are little caveats. One is, you know, my, my agreement, my contract with you talked about a 30-day notice in the case of a voluntary leaving, which this is. I've had a trip planned since 2019 to go to Europe with my extended family. That leaves on June 16th. So that interferes with the 30-day notice period, and that just can't be changed. The other caveat is we were in the middle of a process for hiring a community development director. I would take your direction on what we could do there. I think there are really two options. One would be to defer that for the next city manager to have a role in playing. Or the other would be to have an outside person, somebody like, somebody from DDR or Craig Waldron or somebody sit in on the interviews and, and help select a community development director. So those are two unresolved issues that really need to get, especially my last day, really needs to get resolved, probably tonight. So with that, I would take any questions you might have, and I would apologize, you know, that if this puts the city in a difficult situation.
I appreciate your, what you've done for the city. I mean, the last five months, you have done, you know, a lot with the, worked with you at the EDA. We got the Lilly project going, you know, so there are things that are, you have accomplished. And it's, I believe, you know, the council itself 100% backs you. We have from day one. And we wish you, you know, the best of luck, you know, moving forward. I think, and I'm not sure how the council feels about this, but I think the 30-day notice part, I think it's great you're going on vacation. You can take some time. But to come back to this, I don't know if that's the best thing for you. So I'm thinking, you know, maybe your last day, and I'm going to leave it up to the council. But maybe the day before you leave on your vacation, and that would be the 15th, I believe.
Correct.
I don't know how the council feels about that. And city attorney, do we have any obligation or?
No, I mean, the 30 days obligation, if you will, comes from a written contract between the two parties so that the two parties can come to an agreement that June 15th, is it June 15th, John?
Yes.
Would be the last day and that that's acceptable and that the resignation be received in good standing at that point. So that the two parties have the ability to work, to agree to that.
So if you're comfortable with that.
I would be. And as I said, you know, after I get back from my trip, if I can be of help, you all know how to get ahold of me.
And I know you would be. I mean, it's, I know you're that type of person that is willing to help, so. But again, thank you, John, for everything you've done for the last few months. And I wish it would have worked out, you know, better, but I totally understand, so. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, if the council is okay with the 15th because it is a modification, there should be a motion to accept
Okay.
the resignation effective June 15th. And John, you're in agreement with June 15th as the final day?
I am.
Okay.
So the motion is for to accept the resignation of city manager with a stop date of June 15th.
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion carries. So at this time, we need to figure out replacement. And I had talked to Brian Frandl in regards to, because I think the last time this happened, last year, Brian did a great job. He's kind of our senior person at the staff. And he did a great job. So I reached out to him, and he, he said he would, he would do that, so. And my recommendation is to hire Brian Frandl as the interim city manager.
You know, if you'd permit me, I would just add, you know, as, as an incoming city manager, Brian Frandl really had prepared a good, a good ground for me. And so I appreciated Brian's preceding me, and I think the next permanent city manager would appreciate that as well in Brian.
So do we, we need a motion for that?
Yeah. If the idea is effective June, I'm sorry, I need my calendar. June 16th, Brian Frandl would assume the role as the interim city manager. There should be a motion to that effect.
Motion, so the motion would be for interim city manager Brian Frandl to start on June 16th.
Correct.
Is there a motion for that or any discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that Brian did a great job covering for us last time and, but unlike last time, I think we're in a little different position staffing-wise. And personally, I think that it would be more appropriate to have our finance director step into this role. But, you know, I don't, I mean, this is the time we're supposed to have this discussion. So I would entertain that as an option. I think it just makes more sense. Brian's working over at the Public Works Building. He's got the electric. It's an enterprise fund. It's completely kind of different area where Dan's working here, more of the day-to-day operations with city staff and stuff. I just think it would probably make more sense to entertain that as an option. So I would just put that out there. I, I think Brian's capable of doing it. I support him in doing it. But I think that a better option would be going with our finance director for the interim role.
Okay. So I do have a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion and a second. The discussion, if, once the discussion's complete, then, you know.
Yep. All those in favor of, unless there's more discussion? Not, all those in favor for Brian Frandl to be interim city manager? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. So welcome, Brian, again. Oh, there he is, sitting in the corner.
Yeah, I think another piece to this would be the permanent replacement of the city manager position. And the recruiting last time was done by Mark Casey at David Drown and Associates. Mr. Casey is here with us tonight, and so, you know, perhaps he could talk about what moving forward on a future recruitment might look like.
Okay. Mark, welcome again. You can come up here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As the city manager said, my name is Mark Casey, and I had the privilege of doing the search the last time here, about six months ago, five months ago. And thank you and for this opportunity to come back. Probably one of the very first questions to answer that, yes, this is covered under the two-year warranty that was offered. So there would be no additional cost to the city for this process. I guess may I recommend two different options for the council to consider. Option number one would be to revisit the applicants, the finalists that interviewed on November 17th, 2021. At that time, there was three finalists. One of the three finalists, Mike Anderson, recently accepted a position in another city. So he would not be available. But to the best of my knowledge, both Kevin Kress and Willie Morales would be available. So that would be one option if the council so chooses to bring them back and re-interview them. Another option would be is what I have in front of you would be a draft tentative timeline that the council could take a look at if you wish to repost the position and start all over. Obviously, we'd be able to have a lot of the similar information with the position profile. We can make some updates and adjustments. But what we have in front of you would be having a recruitment period go from June 22nd through July 20th. And then it would be looking for a special council meeting on August 8th for the selection of the finalists, similar to what was done last time. And then interviews on August 31st with the idea of hopefully having a new manager sometime in October, kind of depending on what level of notification they would need to have. The process that we do follow is one that is kind of a domino effect, so one kind of affects the other one. So once we kind of get going, we need to kind of follow a process. I know it's asking a lot. It is curious on how fast the council wishes to move. But if we do wish to move forward, this is a process that I think would be feasible and something to be able to try to get a manager on as soon as possible with still not messing around with the integrity of the process and making sure that it's done in a thorough and efficient manner.
And I understand you won't be around.
Yes and no. So I am done on Friday for a while, but I will be back for the, in early August. So I have a colleague that would be filling in the questions, actually, my boss, the guy that manages, David Drown, Gary Weers. He'd be the one answering any of the questions, and also I would be as much as I can to fill in for questions or additional ones. So I will be back for the selection of the finalists
Okay.
in early August, and then take it from that, that point forward.
So it sounds like we have two options.
That is correct.
Option A is to bring back two candidates. Is anybody in favor of that option A? So I would say, council.
I was going to say, I think it might make sense to at least reach out to them first and see if they're interested. I do understand that one candidate took a, took a, recently took a job, but it might make sense just to reach out to him anyway, just to see if they're still interested. And if, if all three are, move forward from there. But, you know, it kind of, I think that would be the first step logically, to reach out to them first. And then if they all come back and say no, then to proceed with this, that would be my opinion.
Sure. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Thorson, for that one candidate that did, Mike Anderson, it was actually a DDA search. So we would not poach him from a community we just placed him in.
Okay.
So that would kind of be off limits, at least from DDA doing the search. We wouldn't want to go to a community that we placed and say, "Now we're trying to poach somebody." You know, it's kind of, I guess, of an ethical standpoint that we wouldn't want to do that. But yes, in regards to Mr. Kress and Mr. Morales, best of my knowledge, they are available. And that'd just be part of a process. And if you wish to interview and set that up, my only thing would that be if, in fact, they were not, you went through that process and you did, and they were interested and interviewed them, it would just push this entire schedule later, which is obviously your prerogative if that's what you'd like to do first.
Councilmember Cole, how do you?
I mean, I, if either one of those two candidates would still be interested in applying, I would think that would be great. But I would also like to expand the pool and see what the pool would look like.
For myself, I would like to expand the pool.
Yeah, I would too. I just really want to get this moving, just because of the, not the turmoil, but just, you know, get somebody in place. And I know, I don't want to get a rush job on it either, but yeah, if we could expand it, I'd be okay with that. And I know that would cause a little bit more time.
Looks like expanding the pool.
If I'm understanding, what I'm hearing would be to post a position and then follow a schedule similar to what we have in front of you.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Do we vote on that?
You certainly can to make sure the direction's clear. I, I think I've heard four suggest that they'd like to follow what's put on the sheet. I think, Scott, you said contact the finalists first, but I, you know, you can put it to a, put it to a vote so it's official or, you know, consensus can govern, I think, on this one, but that's a, as long as it's clear. As long as the four of you are saying, "Look, please follow this schedule." I mean, you can always contact the finalists and let them know they're still invited to apply.
And that's what I'm hearing, to expand this pool or to follow this timeline.
Right. And now, then I would reach out to the Mr. Morales and Mr. Kress to let them know if this position's going to be opening up again and encourage them to apply.
Yep.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that? Okay?
Then the other piece would be, I guess, would just, what I'll do is send out the profile that was used last time and then ask for a turnaround date to see if there's any revisions that the council wished to have. And then these are the dates then we would put into that profile for, so then those candidates would then mark their calendars. So I guess I'd really appreciate if all the council members could take a look and make sure you could block off August 8th and August 31st. Because that will be, once again, going out into the posting. And once again, I'll work with staff again. Staff was outstanding to work with last time, so I'm looking forward to working with, with the whole crew here.
I appreciate you coming back and working with you again.
Absolutely. Just, should be noted, I guess, not to say it's not a surprise at all, but definitely with some of the negative public relation PR stuff that's out there, some candidates will be weary. And I think also being an election year, it also will put, get some candidates a little skittish just because they don't know what the potential makeup of the council will be. I don't know what the alternative is, because, you know, you've, you've have gone through an interim for a while, and that's probably the last thing you want is a, I would assume.
Election year is, why? Because the council could change?
Exactly right, yeah. So you don't really know what you're dealing with, in a sense. And I think that's one thing as a candidate, you know, stability is everything, in a sense. So you're trying to hopefully know what's in front of you. So, I mean, it happens. And not to say it's, you know, all, all cities are immune from that situation, but no doubt you'll have some candidates that will be a little weary.
So a suggestion, I mean, I was thinking about is offering. So a suggestion, I mean, I was thinking about is offering, to get Craig Waldron back here again, and I did kind of talk to him, he would be interested, and I think that would offer some sort of stability as a, like assistant to Brian? I don't know how that would, a contract or?
Well, I think, you know, I, Brian, I don't think Craig was here when we, for the last time. I mean, I, I do think that having someone help Brian as he's doing two jobs would be beneficial. And so I, I think Brian on his own has the right to enter into some of those contracts to bring someone in, but by all means, if the, if the council is interested in providing Brian that direction or support, that would help, at least Brian. And I don't know if it helps on the recruiting side or not, but I do think on just the day-to-day that would be helpful from a management standpoint. I mean, you're, you're down a full-time person who was the number one in the organization.
I was hoping it would help in the recruitment process.
Absolutely. As you're all probably well aware, Mr. Walden is extremely well-respected in the industry. And I think somebody like him working with North St. Paul, I think, could be very helpful in regards to candidates reaching out and have questions that they may have. So I think it's an outstanding idea.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, city manager Stark?
The next item on the agenda is a amendment to Chapter 117, alcoholic beverages in the code. So on May 3rd, staff presented options to the city council at a workshop regarding fencing and enclosure for outdoor patio areas at establishments that sell liquor. And I want to be clear on this, we're talking about outdoor seating areas that are on private land, not, not in the public right-of-way in this case. So at that meeting, staff was directed to prepare an amendment to Chapter 117 to provide more flexibility for license holders in the establishment of outdoor patio seating. And that proposed amendment is enclosed. That was done by Brandy Howe and the planning staff at WSB. I'm not sure if Brandy wants to add anything.
Oh, come on, Brandy.
I would note that there was.
Put you on the spot.
There was a typo in the original ordinance, and we sent out an update.
The, the update is.
I knew we'd get you up here.
Yeah. So the item 2B in the draft ordinance had language in it that was counter to the intent, so it has been corrected to clarify that the licenses shall not serve, allow, or permit any person to be in possession of or consume alcohol beyond the area of the designated seated area, before it was the opposite. But basically, the proposed amendment is simplifying the language, eliminating the fence requirement, and basically allowing the owners of establishments to determine what kind of demarcation they would like.
Any questions for Brandy? If not, thank you. Motion is for an ordinance amending the North St. Paul City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 117, Alcohol Beverages, Section 117, at 120B.2, patios, decks, and outdoor areas. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. City manager Stark?
Thank you. The next item on the agreement is a, an agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated for Financial Suite Software Services. And I would ask Finance Director Dan Winick to provide the staff memorandum on this one.
Welcome Finance Director.
Thank you very much, Mayor and councilmembers. Yes, I think we can all remember, I think it was back in 2020 that the city council had made a decision to move to the OpenGov platform. There's a number of software programs that are, have been successfully implemented on OpenGov. I came in last year, and the timeline to implement the OpenGov was going to be the end of 2021. They ran into some difficulties, and it was pushed out to end of March and beyond. And I made the decision, because we ran into some issues on the accounts payable side, to, and to back off of the OpenGov. And so, working with our city attorney, we exercised a right that we had and we canceled it on December 7th of 2021. In the meantime, I've got a good feel for the current system from Tyler Technologies that we're using. There are cities in the metro area, actually, that are, that are using Tyler Technology. They're using an higher version. We're on what's called an ENCODE 9. I think Oakdale's moved to the ENCODE 10. What I'm proposing right now is to move us to a software as a, as a service, in other words, move it to the cloud. If we haven't learned anything from, from COVID, is that we need to start moving towards being able to offer a little bit more flexibility for our staff from working remotely. And also, our city manager's been talking about flexible work space and so forth. So this really complements that, moving it to the cloud. I actually have, have been very pleased with the ENCODE software to date. So I, I think basically, as I lost the accountant at the end of November, I quickly had to learn the software myself to get us through year-end and get us through the audit. I actually had fantastic support from ENCODE. They were Johnny-on-the-spot, so to speak, and they, they really did an excellent job. And so, what this proposal, and so we did a demo. We had all the staff review a demo of their current platform of moving it to the cloud. They've already made a lot of different enhancements. It's a whole different look. It's a whole different feel. I've asked the question, if we were to migrate to ENCODE 10 into the future, how would that migration look? It would be about an 18-month process. One of the steps that they would take would be this step, moving you to the cloud first and then moving you onto the ENCODE 10. They're also, Tyler Technology is also working on actually developing this ENCODE, I call it the ENCODE 9, services as a software. They're actually mirroring their ENCODE 10, so it has a lot of features. So there's a lot of features that have already been enhanced in there to date, and they plan on by the end of 2023 to have it fully implemented, and it's going to look and feel pretty much just like ENCODE 10, is what their plan is. Right now, it, it'll give us a complete search capability. It'll give us an ability to download much easier to Excel spreadsheets, it's probably one of the biggest difficulties with our financial system. But from a staff perspective, what this offers to us is a pretty safe migration, and all of our data will be moved to the cloud. And that's a key when I say all of our data, because that is something that OpenGov did not do, even on our permitting and licensing. So we still have data and it still is being utilized and probably will be for a number of years that resides on ENCODE. And so, another factor with that is that the current ENCODE model resides on a server. Our server's outdated. We got till about October of 2022, 23, I think, to be off of that server. So we eventually have to make a move. Just plain and simple, with the resources that the city has and the demands that is being put on the finance staff at this point in time, that I think this is the, the best move and allows us flexibility into the future. And allows us the ability, in a pretty safe way, to make a move into the cloud. Their timeframe from implementation, if we get this signed this week, we'll get into their, their hopper. They're looking at about a four to six-month implementation. Fully testing all the way. Every time they move, they'll move data up there for we, for us to test. It's going to be a pretty, pretty good look, similar look and feel to, we can run processes on. And then when we, when we do the final cutover, they'll bring all of the data up to date. We do our final testing and we, and we move forward. I like their, personally, I like their implementation plan and testing plan much better than the prior software that we're using. It's more my style to make sure that we can test everything and make sure that all of the data and all the processes are working correctly. And when I stop and think of just our utility billing, which we, you know, generate over $17 million, we have a lot of complexities with garbage, electricity, which not many cities have, in addition to water, wastewater, and surface water. It's a lot of complexity with those and a lot of nuances. And this allows us to continue delivering the great service that we, that we give to the city, cities' residents now and into the future. So I'll open for any questions that anybody may have. I will tell you that there is an approximately $6,500 increase from what we're paying to date. I did include that in the 2022 budget. A little bit more than that. I'm not a mind reader to know exactly what this cost would be, but I wanted to make sure that we did have something because we really did need to start moving and move our financial system.
Dan, you mentioned OpenGov.
Yes.
So this will be completely different now?
Yeah, so OpenGov is, we use for licensing and permitting, and we'll continue to do that. We have another software, CivicRec, that does our parks. We'll continue to do that.
Which is a module of OpenGov? Or is it totally?
It's, I think it's a, it's a totally separate software, yeah. And same thing with the, the civic notification that is being, is being deployed right now, is a, is a separate module, but it's on the CivicRec. I don't believe that they're connected. I'd have to ask Carrie for sure, for sure, on those, on that. So it's really moving, you know, as of right now, our accounts payable, our payroll, our utility billing, our general ledger, our accounts receivable.
But Open, OpenGov at one time was going to have all those, or no?
Yes, correct. They were. That's what we backed out of on December 7th last year. Yep.
Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation and bringing forth some of the benefits of, of this new software. I think one question I do have is, if I remember correctly, OpenGov had a forward-facing, public-facing data visualization where residents could access. Is there something similar within the software?
No, but, you know, there's other ways that we can get all of the financial data out into, you know, the, for transparency. So, you know, it moves us back from that standpoint, but we still have the budgeting model, module for, for OpenGov, because we're under contract for that. I've chosen for this calendar year, for this budget, not to utilize that. And part of that is because there's work and additional costs that are going to be needed by OpenGov to be able to crosswalk it all back into our current chart of accounts. When you implement into a new system, before I came here, they crosswalked everything over and set up a whole new chart of accounts that's in OpenGov. We're using ENCODE. It's not the same chart of account. So we would have to have them do work for us to, to be able to, to utilize that system. I've, I'm utilizing a little bit old-fashioned on the budget part to it. I'm a little, I've got, I've built all Excel spreadsheets that intertwine with everything and look up tables and everything to be able to quickly change things and move forward. We'll be starting to do some budget presentations probably in later June, early July, so you'll see how I'm doing on, on that part and see how those spreadsheets are working for us. But you will see the look and feel pretty much what you saw last year.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cole?
Again, thank you for the presentation. I think this is awesome. I, I hear excitement in your voice when it comes, talking about software and numbers. I did have one, one question and concern, and, and it has to do with migrating basically all of the documents from the city in, into a cloud. Is this any type of proprietary software so that in the event that we, five years from now, 10 years from now, whatever, we would change direction and go with something else, that it would be easy to recover? Or would it be in a data format that it would cause us a lot of additional work to be able to drop it back and apply it to something else?
So, councilmember Cole, I can answer part of that question. We own the data, so we can get the data back. Formatting-wise, virtually any company that's going to do a migration and transform your data can, can take virtually any data and convert it over into another software program. So we're pretty, pretty safe on that. And I'll kind of turn it over. I don't believe there was any restrictions, and I've asked questions from Tyler Technology, from a rep that I've been working with, and they seemed that they would be very helpful if we decided, because that was a question that I had asked. But I'll kind of ask our city attorney, because I did have our city attorney review the contract to make sure that there wasn't anything in there that, that they had seen. Am I pretty much on the right path there?
No, Dan, absolutely. So we own the data. If we choose to go in another direction, we absolutely get the data back. In terms of how it will merge with the new system, I might, you're, I don't know. I think Dan hit the nail on the head. Anytime you, you're tempted to move to a new system, leave an old system, the new system usually makes it pretty easy for you to merge just because you're a new customer. So that's been my experience with that.
Thank you.
What else? Good presentation. So the motion is for resolution approving SaaS agreement with Tyler Technologies for Financial Suite Software Services.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Wong. Second by councilmember Peterson. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Good luck with it. So are the servers now, are we getting away from our servers, pretty much?
Yes.
So everything's going to be pretty much cloud-based and the server's going to be kind of obsolete?
Yeah, and actually, they have better security. The responsibility right now is on, on us and MetroINET. It, it's more difficult right now to request backups of our, of our data. So, you know, yeah, it, it's just, yeah, the, the cloud is just a much better place. I think every time we have, you know, we've had now, since I've been here, two bond rating calls, that's always a question that they'll ask us, is what about our security? And so I'm always reaching out to MetroINET and say, okay, what is your plans? And it was, you know, a little, I'll say disheartening. I'll leave it at that. Their response didn't change much from October of last year till just, you know, a month ago. And, and I, I do realize that they have new leadership, that things are going to be changed and be enhanced, but it just, it just, I think, protects the city's data a little bit better, so.
Thank you. Turn it over to city manager Stark.
Thank you. This next item is the acceptance of a grant with the state of Minnesota. It's a planning grant for the, to the city of North St. Paul for stormwater, wastewater, and community resilience. Morgan Dolly and his team at WSB put together the grant application, so I think it'd be appropriate to thank Morgan for his work on this and to ask him to tell us more about the grant.
Welcome, Morgan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As John introduced here, so the consideration for the council in terms of an action item is to execute a grant agreement between the state of Minnesota, specifically the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and the city of North St. Paul for receipt of some grant funds. It's actually very timely, and I thought a good fit for North St. Paul is this is actually a grant program. a good fit for North St. Paul is this is actually a grant program which is specifically targeted, designated by the legislature to identify and move forward from a planning standpoint, initiatives which are pointed towards resiliency. And by that, I mean being able to respond to climate change, increased precipitation, things that certainly we experience here in North St. Paul and have been experienced by other communities across Minnesota. Approximately eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars of funding was identified by the legislature for this fiscal calendar year within the state. And out of that eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I'm pleased to report to the city council that we were notified that our grant application was accepted, received and approved, and they had awarded about fifty-two thousand dollars worth of grant dollars. There is a match. There's about a five thousand dollar match, which is outlined in your packet here in terms of just a cash match for that fifty-two thousand dollars. We were actually able to reduce that cash match down slightly by following the rules of the application, but identifying some in-kind contributions in terms of time by public staff, public work staff and personnel that would be involved with the process as well, too. So that minimized some of the cash outlay for the city. Basically, I mean, I mentioned resiliency in response to, you know, climate change. And we had, just on, I think, May 12th, I might have that date wrong, but we had a fairly significant rain event here in North St. Paul with some localized flooding. And according to the watershed, Ramsey Washington Metro Watershed District, who Public Works and myself met with recently, that was about a ten-year event. So there's about three inches of rain that fell within about a two to three hour timeframe. So certainly not the heaviest rain event that we've gotten here in North St. Paul. We will get more rain than that, but that was a fair amount. And it did cause some localized flooding in low areas throughout the city. And so it's timely in that manner that, you know, just as recently as that, we saw some concern there. And also, Ramsey Washington Metro Watershed District is also embarking and spending their own dollars and probably pursuing their own grant funding for maybe larger capital projects that will benefit the greater region within their watershed district, including portions of North St. Paul to address flooding and basically looking at some potential improvements in North St. Paul and Maplewood, specifically the Goodrich Golf Course is an identified area that they're looking into right now to redirect some floodwaters that may potentially provide some benefit to areas of North St. Paul. They're just starting on that effort. But basically, when they had heard that we had been awarded the grant, this resiliency grant, and then I'd be presenting it to the city council, the watershed staff got kind of excited and they said, wow, we're doing our own thing. Maybe we can collaborate on this. And I think that's a great kind of just serendipitous timing thing that we'll want to leverage with this effort if we do move forward with the council's blessing. So just for the benefit of the public, anybody watching from home or in the audience here, just really quickly, this effort, which is a planning effort that we had kind of outlined in the grant application based on the criteria that they wanted to see, this is what we could do and what we proposed to do. And this would be performed by the city's engineering consultant, WSB. But to build off of several plans that you have all heard here before, presented, been publicly discussed, including the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, our 2006 Influen Infiltration Study, 2018 Water Management Plan, and the 2017 Flood Control Assessment. And what we would propose to do is bulletized in your staff memo here, but again, for the benefit of the public, we want to integrate climate resiliency into planning, policy, operations and budgeting processes, become more resilient through climate change mitigation and adaptation, consider climate resiliency in ongoing city planning and address those residents who would be most affected by climate change, meaning vulnerable populations such as low-income families, minorities, handicapped, et cetera. Preserve, maintain and improve the stormwater storage and detention systems that we already have and potentially are planning for to control excessive volumes and rates of runoff. Improve and expand existing stormwater systems to minimize the duration and impact of localized flooding and increase public awareness, education, understanding and involvement in water and natural resource management issues. So really, all of this within the framework of the grant program is intended to provide a plan and an implementation. So not just a plan that sits on the shelf, but a plan that can actually be put into action over time, a framework that's based on trying to synthesize vulnerable populations, vulnerable infrastructure, system weaknesses that would be identified through the process and the anticipated impact, anticipated impacts of climate change. I didn't mention in the memo here, but another thing, combined with the watershed districts' planning and the efforts that they're moving towards, all of this together, identifying specific things can also be used to support future grant applications as those opportunities might arise to try to generate dollars for local city improvements that might include a multitude of different things. But that would be another thing that this plan could be used to basically leverage moving forward into the future. It's certainly up to the legislature, but this initial kind of designation of funds for resiliency is planning-oriented, and there may be additional funds moving forward that are identified, again, state for local application competitive grant that would actually pay for improvements or capital investments that would maybe supplement or replace or be able to use, be used in concert with local funds or local funds plus watershed district funds. So at any rate, I just wanted to outline again that the finance, city finance director has reviewed the cash match of approximately five thousand dollars. He's acceptable of that. Seems okay. And then the timing on this effort is that we'd have to be done with everything by 2023, end of June, basically to align with the state fiscal year. So that would have to be wrapped up, including any public outreach and education, that sort of thing. So if the council were to consider the grant agreement and approve that as recommended within the packet here, our next step would be to forward that executed grant agreement to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and probably host a kickoff meeting with Ramsey Washington Metro Watershed District since they had said they were interested in being a part of it. I've already kind of forwarded them a bunch of our stormwater as-built record drawings and things that they were looking for as a part of their efforts. And so it's, it'll just be kind of a nice opportunity to move forward together with them, see what types of things that they're looking at, which might be much larger scale, right, covering big chunks of multiple cities, but then also trying to build off that with more localized things that might be able to spend some attention on some of the problem areas that we have throughout the city that might benefit from identifying what can and should be done. So with that, I'll stand for any questions the council might have.
Any questions for Morgan? No questions.
I just want to say, thanks. Thank you, Morgan, for doing that. Those grants are good. So, thank you.
All right. So we need a motion to authorize the execution of the attached resilience grant agreement with the state of Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and the city's consulting engineer, WSB, to complete the tasks outlined in the resilience grant work plan in accordance with the MPCA-provided budget deliverables, tasks and subtasks. Is that correct?
You read it perfectly.
Perfect. Moved by Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Morgan. City Manager Stark.
The only thing I have to report is that on, as you're aware, a development team has been working with the EDA on the Lilly Building property. The developer is Jim Laval and a larger group. So he and his architecture team, Momentum Design Group, are going to be holding a community meeting to gather input on the proposed design of their project for that site. The community meeting is scheduled for next Monday, June 13th, from 5:30 to 6:30 at City Hall. We haven't reserved a room. You know, have we?
We can do it in here.
I think this space is the best.
Yep.
Instead of trying to get residents to try to make their way back to the training room. So it would be held here then. The project has expanded a little bit from when you saw it last. It now includes the building at 2503 Seventh Avenue East. In other words, it goes all the way to Helen. They have gotten the building that's, that was owned by Mr. John Picha under contract and are adding that into the development proposal as well. So again, that is Monday from 5:30 to 6:30.
Wow. It's exciting.
Yes.
Do you know how many residents are actually within that 500 feet? I noticed that the notice will go out to 500 feet. There's really not a whole lot of residents. So it'd be nice to even get it on the website.
It will be on the website.
I think people would be excited just to see.
There are a lot of residents in the Sentinel and there are a lot of residents in, there are a couple of other multifamily buildings within that 500 feet. So that is a fair number of people there. And they're, the developers are doing their best to get those tenants notified as well. But yes, it is going to be, if it's not already, it's going to be on the city's website.
Good. Good. And other updates?
No, thank you.
So reports of council commissions and committees. Councilmember Cole.
Park and Recreation had their, had their last meeting on 525. They want to thank the council for supporting the improvement plan and they're eager and excited to move forward and start to bring some projects in front of council. They had put together basically a list of strategic items, and that might be some replacement of some existing playground equipment that is dated, as well as some strategic ideas. They sat, they prioritized. They're going to review their priorities at the next meeting and hope to be on, hope to be presenting to council or have something in front of council for approval moving forward quickly. Next, next Park and Rec meeting is going to be Wednesday, June 22nd. Park and Rec is moving back out into the community for the next four months, which means there's a community meeting held at six o'clock on the 22nd, followed by the Park and Rec meeting at 6:30. I believe the next meeting, the meeting is at Southwood, but I do not know the exact location. So more to come and keep an eye on the, an eye on the public, or I'm sorry, on the city website. Next EDA meeting is June 14th, 3 o'clock in the Sandberg Room.
I'm assuming the Southwood would be at the Observation Deck?
Sure.
I'm assuming that's where it would be. Councilmember Wong.
This Planning Commission met here last Thursday, and we discussed the sign ordinance. And it looks like we're pretty much squared away with that, and we'll be seeing that go through the process. And we also discussed the redevelopment master plan, and we got good feedback, and everyone seemed to be in good alliance around that. And then the next meeting for the Planning Commission will be at 6:30 on July 7th here in the chambers. As for the Arts and Culture Commission, we did have a presentation here for the workshop this evening, and it was to discuss the project Snowy and, which is a statue project. Also, the art cart has been in preparation. So you'll see the art cart around Music in the Parks on June 16th at 7:00 at Casey Lake, June 28th at 10:00 at Housie. And then we'll have some more coming the remainder of the summer. And we also have a good list of volunteers to be helping out at the art cart. So I think the commission is really looking forward to getting started this summer. That's all I have.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, the 19th Avenue Student House Building, house is going to be finished by July 12th. Tom told me that today. There'll be an open house for everybody, probably the 13th of July. They'll be finishing the carpeting and laminate by next week. The driveway will be poured next week, and it's looking really good. And there's been a lot of interest in it. So that's all good. And then the neighbors wanted to kind of thank the students. So they're going to have like a little sandwiches and pop or lemonade or something for the students because they were very impressed with the students. And then it'll be bringing the neighborhood all together. It would be a real positive thing. And that'll be sometime between the 12th and the 14th of July. My last League of Minnesota Cities meeting, my term is over, so I had a very good three years with them. And the new board members will be elected up at the annual conference up in Duluth. And the Business Association Lunch Picnic will be next Tuesday at 11 o'clock at Casey Lake Park. I think it's going to be pizza. It's usually pizza. Or did you hear something else?
Are we having it up at the Sentinel Building? Or is that something different?
No, I think he said Casey Lake. I'll check. I don't know.
Maybe check that because I'd
Okay.
I'd heard that there might be something at the Sentinel up in the
For that day.
For that day.
Okay. Thanks.
But I could be wrong.
That's all I have.
Councilmember Thurston. General Business, Councilmember Cole.
I have two points. One, I think summer's finally upon us, or at least spring is finally here. So with that, to build on what Councilmember Wong said, the first Music in the Park is going to be Thursday, June 16th at Casey Lake at 7:00 PM. It will, the band will be Brio Brass. I believe this will be the third year they've been there. They're like a 50-piece brass group. They're phenomenal.
It's crazy.
If you've got the opportunity, please, please come out and give it a try or give, you know, take, take the opportunity. A lot of people in lawn chairs, blankets, big family event, et cetera. The other, the other point was, building, kind of building on that theme, First Car Show is on Friday night. I had the opportunity to come down. Very, very well attended. A lot of people out. It was great to see. We're kind of, you know, continuing to move back into the, into the normal phase, per se, of life. The establishments appeared to be very full, but I only viewed them from the outside. So just, but other than that, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong.
Sure. I'd like to thank staff for putting together the shredding event for the public. And also, I would like to just say, you know, it's Pride Month, so happy Pride Month to everyone here in the community. And also, June 19th is Juneteenth. So also would like to celebrate that here in North St. Paul. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, I just want to do a shout out to Public Works. There was this pothole on Margaret and right by the lake there, and I hit it every day. And today, it was patched up. It was a couple of days. So I really appreciate that there's new residents in the Flirty Home, and they're very happy, too, because it was impacting their move. And so good job on that. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Councilmember Thurston.
Yeah, I've been contacted by several residents who've expressed concerns over the city ordinance that states that driveways cannot exceed 22 feet at the property line. So specifically, we're talking about when your driveway meets the curb in the street. In light of our city manager's resignation, I was hoping maybe, you know, we could get this on the schedule for a workshop for discussion, but we'll see how time allows itself or if that's just something for future discussion. And then also, just a friendly reminder that as a city, we are obligated to have all of our meetings accessible to the public. And if the Parks and Recreation Commission are going to be meeting at the parks, they're not exempt from that. So just a reminder that where they're going to be meeting, they have to keep that in mind, and specifically, people that fall under the Americans with Disability Act. So just want to bring that as a reminder.
Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, just one last thing. I really want to thank you, John, for your work with us here at the city. And I wish you the best in your next phase. And I appreciate all the work that you've done for the city. Best of luck.
And I would echo that. It's been a pleasure working with you the last few months and getting to know you. And you're a great person, you know. Your heart is big, and I wish you the best of luck also. So thank you for all you've done. I'd like to add also, see a friendly face in the crowd here, Don Beenick. Welcome back, Don. I always like to see you. I am going to host a, I'm going to call it Brew with the Mayor. That's going to be tomorrow at Roddy's Bar between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. Pre-COVID, I had Pre-COVID, I had talked to a few establishments in regards to, not only for the Monday, first Monday of the month, but also to get out into the community. And pre-COVID, I did get to Love's Ice Cream, and I want to, had talked to Kelly a couple of years ago to also do this, but when COVID hit, I was, couldn't, couldn't do it. So, I'm going to do it tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Roddy's Bar. I am not buying. I cannot. But I did ask councilmember Cole to be there also to, to back me up in case I need a sergeant of the arms. So, no, I'm just, I'm just kidding, but
We can't come?
No. You could come, but you can't participate? I mean, I think it's
No, that's fine, I suppose, because there's too many of those.
Yeah.
Be careful of the quorum, but you know, chance social gatherings are an allowable thing. You just can't let it turn into a meeting and discussing a business.
Right. And because I'm having this open meeting to myself, I don't know if that would be, I think the optics would not be very good. So. With that, I got nothing else. Motion to adjourn. Moved by councilmember Peterson?
Second.
Second by councilmember Cole. Any discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Just a reminder that there is an HRA meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Everybody is ready to go home, and I know.
We'll take a five-minute